This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Hibansky. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the town of Stratford, and I will be introducing the Stratford Zoning Commission's organizational meeting on January 27, 2021. This meeting will be held via teleconference go-to meeting per the Governor's Executive Orders that were put into effect in 2020. The first order of business is to elect our chairman for the year. At this time, I would like to see if we have any... Actually, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:04. First order of business is to elect our chairman. Do we have any nominations from the board?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hibansky, I would like... This is Mike Henrick. I'd like to nominate Chris Silhavy for the position of chairman.
Newly noted. Do we have a second?
Second, Alec Vacola.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say Chris did a great job over the last couple of years, and he's led us well, and I look forward to him leading us for the next year as well.
And Mr. Chairman, would you like to... Should we appoint someone to stand in for Commissioner Francis?
Actually, I believe the protocol is you don't for a regular member during the organizational, so we'll just leave it at that for now.
Okay, okay. I'd like to take a roll call vote.
That's why he's the chairman, because he knows that stuff.
That's right. Mr. Vigliotti?
Aye, yes, okay.
Mr. Vacola?
Aye.
Mr. Henrick?
Aye.
Mr. Silhavy?
Aye.
We have four votes in favor, zero against. Mr. Chairman, congratulations, and thank you again for your leadership on the zoning commission. I will now turn the organizational meeting over to you for the election of our vice chairman for the year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hibansky, and I thank the members for continuing to support me as your chairman. It's an honor to do so, and I look forward to working with all of you in the coming year. So, next order of business is the election of a vice chair for the year 2021. Can I have a nomination from the floor, please?
Yes, hi, it's Alec Vacola. I nominate Mr. Mike Henrick for vice chairman.
Mike Henrick has been nominated for vice chair. Is there a second?
I can't second it.
I will take the opportunity to second him myself, Chris Silhavy. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? If not, all in favor of Mike Henrick as chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman. Welcome back. I'm advised that the agenda mentions the nomination of a secretary. That position is no longer actually something we handle. We have a recording secretary who is Gail DeCilio, so we have no need to elect one, so I'll just actually ask for a motion to have that stricken from the agenda, please.
Make a motion to strike.
Motion to strike by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second?
Second by Alec Vacola.
Second by Alec. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Gail, for all of your services at the secretary of our board. Last item is the adoption of the rules of order. I am asking for no changes from the one that was adopted previously, so can I have a motion to re-adopt the rules of order as listed?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to re-adopt the existing rules of orders as listed.
Motion by Mr. Henrick, second, Mr. Vigliotti. I saw your hand there. Any changes, corrections, amendments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We'll take a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Vigliotti, second.
Second, Mr. Vacola.
Second, Mr. Vacola. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. The organizational meeting is adjourned, and we'll proceed into our regular business agenda. And we're adjourned at 7:09 PM. Okay, let me just shift gears here for a second, guys. Get my other agenda up here. Okay, Mr. Henrick, I believe we'll... First of all, let's call to order the meeting at 7:09 PM. And let's see here. Mr. Fredette, would you care to sit in for Mr. Francis this evening? Mr. Fredette, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Just couldn't find my unmute button.
Okay, are you prepared to sit in for Mr. Francis on the applications tonight?
Sure, it's my pleasure.
So be it. Okay, Mr. Henrick, can you call application number one?
100 East Main Street, petition of Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, approval of liquor location to establish a Class D restaurant café permit incidental to a restaurant in a CAMA zone.
Okay, so the petitioner present?
Yes, Attorney Michael Pease on behalf of the petitioner.
Okay, good evening, sir. Please present your petition.
Yes, good evening. On behalf of Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado, we are seeking to obtain a permit and seek approval of a Class D restaurant permit that would allow the sale of alcoholic beverages in conjunction with the sale of food at the Chipotle restaurant located at the 100 East Main Street address. The sale of alcohol is completely incidental or complimentary to the sale of food at this restaurant, and is not a focus of the restaurants' offerings. As you could see by the menu that we had provided with our application package and documentation, they limit their offerings to probably one or two beer types, and they usually try to go with a local offering, you know, as opposed to a national. And then they have two premixed margaritas that they offer as menu items as well. From a national perspective, you should know that they average mainly or roughly about $1,100 per location per year in annual alcohol sales. So it truly is incidental and, you know, secondary to the sale of food at all of their restaurants on a national basis.
Okay.
I had provided a service protocol, so you could understand how, if you hadn't been in a Chipotle, how the alcohol is served or sold, with age verification being verified or checked at the point of purchase and the point of payment. Mr. Hibansky had asked a question in his notes regarding the application, regarding some of the service protocol components, and I think one thing that was neglected to be put into the service protocol is that when a patron purchases alcohol for consumption on premise, the attendant or the employee behind the counter that is serving the alcohol opens it for them. So they're not able to roam the premise with a sealed container of alcohol, so.
Is it available in the... I know the location there on East Main Street has the Chipotle lane, the drive-through. Is it available in that as part of that offering or not?
It would be available, and that's only because of executive order that would permit that by Governor Lamont that allows the sale of sealed alcoholic beverages with to-go meals.
So once the executive order expires, that would no longer be offered there?
The genie is out of the bottle on that, so we will see how the package store lobby reacts when those executive orders go away. But that would be my understanding, that as soon as those orders go away, the ability of you to purchase alcoholic beverages with a to-go food purchase will probably sunset.
Other questions from members?
Just... So it sounds like this is Mike Henrick. It sounds like it's a standard operating procedure of Chipotles. I'm ashamed to say I've never eaten in a Chipotle, so I don't know, but is what you're explaining to a standard procedure in the majority of Chipotles around the country?
It is the standard procedure, and, you know, they have roughly 2,700 locations in the United States, and that is the standard procedure where, you know, they've been able to obtain zoning permission or, you know, land use permission for that. But it is part of their national model, and they require that, as you would expect, based on the numbers I've just told you. You know, the liquor application fee on an annual basis, with the state of Connecticut not counting legal fees and anything else associated with this, eats up any money that they make relative to the sale of alcohol, but it just becomes, you know, part of their national brand, so to speak. I think it's important to note that they don't undertake national advertising campaign relative to the alcohol sales. You'll never see it in any of their commercials or their ads. They don't advertise beer specials or drink specials of any type. You know, it's there. It's available for a patron if they want it. Quite frankly, the few times I've eaten in a Chipotle, I've never even seen anybody order, but that's their model.
And I would assume that they have some type of... I'm sure they have training for the waitstaffs, but they would have a different style or type of training for anybody who might serve alcohol, so they're fully aware.
Yeah, they... Yes, that's correct. They have an internal alcohol service program, similar to what you might see or hear advertised as a tips training program that some restaurants utilize. They've got their own in-house program that they utilize with their servers.
Mr. Vigliotti, any questions?
Just, you know, in terms of the executive order, I mean, do we have any... Like if it does sunset and there is... I mean, does the town have final say over whether we allow drive-away sealed containers?
Mr. Hibansky or Ms. Sullivan, you might want to be able to chime in on that if the attorney doesn't have that answer.
Yeah, I would say...
It's my understanding.
I think that when the state prevents it, the town can't permit it. So it's because the state, basically, and the executive orders have said, you know, for this time, where you would normally have been able to go inside and get yourself a drink, as long as it's in a sealed container, you can take one with you. But, you know, we can't override that. I mean, I'm not sure what's going to happen, you know, when this is over. Maybe they'll say, yeah, that's okay, you can have a takeout meal and take a sealed container of liquor, but at the moment, you can't do that.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Vigliotti?
No.
Mr. Vacola, any questions, comments?
No, just the only question was, he said there was going to be just two different margaritas and a choice of a beer.
That's correct. There's usually a choice of two beers typically what they have, and maybe three. They try to have at least one local, you know, relative to either the state or the locale of the particular restaurant, and then they do have two margarita, premixed margarita offerings.
Well, that's nice that you said local. Maybe they could get two roads in there.
Yeah.
We help them out too, so that's great. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fredette?
No, all questions I had were covered already. Thank you.
Okay, and there's no other additional changes to the layout of the building at all, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Last chance. If not, and speaking as somebody that frequents Chipotle, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing item.
Motion to close.
Mr. Vigliotti, is there a second?
Second, Alec Vacola.
Second, Mr. Vacola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Hibansky, I believe item two has requested a continuation. Is that correct, sir? Thank you, sir.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Item two on the agenda has been continued to February.
Okay, like the godlike reverb there. So do we need a motion to continue? I think we probably do. We need a motion to continue 6520-6540 Main Street until February 24th. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Richard Fredette to make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Fredette. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Vacola. Mike Henrick, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, let me go into our... And actually, we got to do one more quick motion really quick. Let's conclude, close the... Because, Mr. Hibansky, the administrative items, those are all going to be handled in the administrative session, correct? I see you have them written out separately in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, you cut out an audio with me. I'm not sure if everyone else heard that last statement.
Okay, I was just going to say on your zoning commission agenda, all the administrative items, those are not requiring any public hearing, correct? So we can close on the public hearing?
That is correct. We just want to make sure that we're listing any site plan reviews on the notice, so that's just to cover ourselves.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing portion of our meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Mike Henrick.
By Mr. Henrick, second.
Second, Alec Vacola.
Second, Mr. Vacola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We are out of our public hearing at 7:21 PM, and we'll now go into the administrative session. We are sailing here, guys. That's good.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the 111720 joint meeting.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Vigliotti.
Mr. Vigliotti, any corrections, changes to them? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to continue all items pertaining to 6520-6540 Main Street until the next meeting.
Okay, motion by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second to continue all the items from 6520-6540 Main Street?
Second, Alec Vacola.
Second, Mr. Vacola. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Hey, did we miss the actually voting on the Chipotle item on the agenda? Did we miss a page, Mr. Hibansky?
Yeah, number one should actually be voting on the items for the agenda for January 27, 2021.
Okay. Give me one second here. I want to check one thing. Got a little bit of a... Okay, considering that... Yeah, you're right, it's not on here. Okay, can we have a motion to suspend the rules and add 100 East Main Street onto the agenda, please? I hate to do it this way, but I think we have to.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Fredette, so moved.
Mr. Fredette, so moved by Mr. Fredette. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Vigliotti.
Second, Mr. Vigliotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Two-thirds of the members having voted in the affirmative, the 100 East Main Street is added onto the agenda and can now be considered.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Fredette.
Mr. Fredette?
Motion to approve.
Does it go onto the table to be added, or?
You know, let's do it just to be by the book. Let's recognize it first. I hate to do all these miniature motions on here, but I think we just have to. We're a little bit confused here this morning, this afternoon, this evening, whatever the hell it is. Okay, so I'll recognize Mr. Henrick's motion to take the item off the table.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fredette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Now I'll recognize Mr. Fredette's motion to approve 100 East Main Street.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Discussion on the... Second by Mr. Henrick. Any discussion on the application?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henrick?
So, from what we heard from the applicant, this is something that's typical in a Chipotle restaurant. Chipotle is a national chain. They run a great establishment. They've been a great addition to our community. They fit well where they're at. There's been no issues, no concerns over there to date. So based on this, it's something that they do across the country. They have rules and regulations to govern them, additional training. I see no issues with the application.
Okay, additional comments? I'll just add that, yeah, I've actually visited the place a couple of weeks ago, a little bit before Christmas, I think, and seems like everything seems to be moving smoothly. I know they do have that type of offering in their location in Shelton and in the one in Milford, too. So it appears that this is pretty standard there, and it's good. It looks like they'll try to support one of our local businesses, too, in their offering, so I would support its approval. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. And we'll go back to the agenda. Any zoning enforcement issues for many commissioners? Hearing none. We have an accessory apartment application, 6345 Main Street. Mr. Hibansky, would you care to walk us through it?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Hibansky here. The zoning office received an application to establish an in-law apartment at 6345 Main Street to convert the existing two-car garage into a in-law accessory apartment. Part of the application process is to have a signed affidavit, essentially the applicant agreeing to all the conditions and requirements for the accessory apartment requirements. This application wouldn't even be before this commission until the zoning enforcement officer and myself have checked to ensure that it complies with the regulations. We have determined that it does. Therefore, it's our recommendation that this application be considered by the zoning commission for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henrick?
Just, Mr. Hibansky, I thought we had set these up as an administrative approval. Do we need to... And I could be wrong about that, but if that is the case, do we even need to vote on it, or are you just bringing it to us as a consideration?
Commissioner Henrick, it's been my understanding, and I believe the regulations still read, that it does require an administrative approval from the zoning commission. You know, there have been, over the years, some items that the zoning commission has felt that, you know, they feel the staff is capable of approving things, items like this. Or, you know, another example would be some of the outdoor carnival events. They have given that authority to... The zoning commission has given that authority to planning and zoning staff. So if that's something that the zoning commission is interested in doing, that's something that we can put together. But currently, as the zoning regulations read, it requires administrative approval from the zoning commission directly.
Okay, so I would make a... Since it meets all the requirements and criteria as laid out by Mr. Hibansky, I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second?
Second, Alec Vacola.
Second by Mr. Vacola. Any discussion on the application? Hearing none, and seeing that it meets all of the criteria that we have laid out before us, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, let me go back to the work agenda. Okay, let's see here. We already tabled the... Continued the settlement and version controls, so any... Anything else, planning projects, other items, goal settings, anything that the commission should be aware of, since this is the first meeting of the year, Mr. Hibansky?
Well, the town planner and I are kind of working on some yearly updates, and I anticipate presenting those at the next meeting. We do have quite a few planning programs that are carrying over from last year and some new ones. Part of the capital improvement program, five-year budget process, last year, the planning and zoning office secured funding for the rewrite or revision of the plan of conservation and development, which will likely begin towards the end of this year, maybe the beginning of next year. So we'll be hiring a consultant to help with that process. We also received some funding for a rewrite of the zoning regulations, which is going to be a really big project for our office, possibly multi-year. Our regulations really have not been touched or been overhauled in, I would say, 70 years. So, you know, we've worked to digitize our regulations and get them in similar formats as our town ordinances, as well as, you know, connect our zoning regulations to the GIS, so that when someone goes on a GIS, they're able to click on a parcel, and it'll tell you, look, you can build a house or a building this big with this many units. Now we need to work on the zoning regulations to make sure that they are guiding the developing world to what the expectations are of the town. So those are some big projects that we're going to be working on, and I anticipate having a more formal update next month.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, members, any questions for Mr. Hibansky on any of these items?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Henrick, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
I know you mentioned GIS mapping. Hopefully Stratford won't use that as the final criteria to zoning approvals, because I can tell from firsthand experience, they are not 100% accurate. They're good tools, but they're not surveyor-quality mappings.
Yeah, and that is 100% correct, and I would reiterate what Commissioner Henrick has stated there. You know, those are guidance, more than anything else. And the attempt to link our regulations with the GIS is merely to... For when your homeowner wants to put a fence up, it'll actually link the GIS to our regulations that says, based on your property, you're allowed to build a fence that's X high. You know, if you're a corner lot, this is what you're allowed to do. It just gives a bit more detail and guidance for people as they try to figure out what they need to do to get something approved. And essentially, we're putting a disclaimer on it. The town's not responsible for any of the accuracy of any of this. You should always call the office to get confirmation on anything.
Thank you.
Jay?
Mr. Vigliotti?
Yeah, do you have any information on that survey we were asked to take? You know, they emailed us to survey from...
The Housing Partnership?
Right.
Go ahead, Jay. I was just going to say that I believe that the survey closes on the 31st, so I would encourage all members and all alternates, if you have not filled it out yet, to please do. We can resend you out the link if you'd like. We are definitely trying to gather some data. I've heard it's good response so far, and it's going to help us. We are actually statutorily required to have a housing plan. The state put this out there, and when the mayor... out there, and when the mayor reconstituted the housing partnership, that's actually one of the charges. I've been working with them in partnership with Commissioner Watson from the planning commission and a few other members, a few other members of the community. We're hoping to wrap that part of it done and actually have that plan put together sometime in the first half of this year. So, Jay, I don't know if you have any further insight on that?
Yeah, until the survey closes, we haven't really drilled down on much of the data that's come from our survey. What I can tell you is that we are more than pleasantly surprised at the participation in the survey. So, you know, once we kind of look at the data and kind of synthesize what's being said, and we try to weed out, you know, the good data and the bad data, or separate the two, and then, you know, try to put that together in a report that's understandable and helps us chart a path forward. But we are very encouraged at the participation rate that we've received so far, so.
Okay. Our next admin meeting is listed for February 10th. I'm not anticipating we're going to have anything to talk about then, but we will send... If we decide to cancel, we'll send out an official communication for that. Otherwise, we will see you back here on February 24th. And again, just to Mr. Fredette, Mr. Nguyen, and Ms. Manos, as we're still in the COVID thing, I appreciate you attending, and please plan on coming to all of these meetings, because we never know when we might have a technical hitch and might bring you in. So thank you, all three of you, for coming tonight. And we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. My Mr. Vigliotti, is there a second? Thank you. Second, Mr. Fredette?
I'll make that motion.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Carries unanimously. We're adjourned at 7:36. Have a good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night.